Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, December 18th, 2017, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first... The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and also a committee of the whole recap. Are there any additions to the agenda, Andrew?
Nope.
If not, I would entertain... I'm ready to run a... Motion to approve the... Thank you, Brent. Anthony, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Approved same... Upon the same sign, motion carries. Agenda is approved. Anthony, did you want to just give the audience a quick recap of the committee of the whole meeting? Andrew? Did I say Anthony?
He did.
Our city administrator, Andrew.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. We just had a lengthy work session just before this meeting with Stan Tech and Joel Carlson. The city's lobby is to talk about the Regional Treatment Center in the upcoming legislative session. And just for the sake of time, I'll just say that the takeaway from tonight's session was that staff will begin working with Stan Tech on developing a timeline for the next phases and what we can realistically get done in the next two years and develop a legislative monetary request based on that timeline and what's actually achievable over the next couple of years. So, we're going to get working on that, and then the second meeting in January is when we're going to report back to the council and look for action from the council on formulating what that actual 2018 legislative bonding request is going to be. So, a lot of work to be done in the next couple of weeks, but we'll have something before the council in January.
Thank you. Anyone have anything to add? Thank you, Andrew. There are no public hearings this evening under awarding of bids. We will need a resolution awarding a bid for public improvements, number 7, 9756 to 9759, landfill demo cell. Brian, you borrow?
Thank you, your honor, and good evening. Good evening, members. On November 28th, we sealed bids were open for public improvement 9756, construction of demolition cell 3A. And this project also consists of another public improvement, 9759, which is actually the closure of our active cell, phase one and two. A total of 12 bids were submitted at the time of the opening. Riley Brothers Incorporated out of Morris, Minnesota was the apparent low bidder. They submitted a base bid amount of $993,502.09. The engineer's estimate was $1.1 million. Also, a part of the base bid, there was an alternate for a safety guardrail system. They submitted a bid for this alternate amount of $17,670.40. I would also recommend this be incorporated in the total project cost. Houston Engineering has tabulated the bids, conducted a post-bid interview. In your packet, there is their memorandum discussing the projects in the interview, and there's also included a bid abstract for all the bids received. Therefore, with Riley bids, construction, some construction contingency, engineer design, and some legal costs, the total estimated project cost is about $1.3 million. If accepted by the city council, the plan of attack is for the contractor to mobilize equipment throughout the winter here and start right away on the construction of cell 3A. Once that cell is constructed, part of the contract will, like I mentioned, would be to start the closure of the existing cell, phase one and two. I also provide in there informational notes, we have approximately 4,300 yards of permit capacity left. So, if loads are restricted, we may be able to keep that cell active, hopefully with the timing and everything, and not come into an instance where we have to cease all activity of taking in new class-one demo landfill. But we're monitoring that as we go. In regards to the fee, worked with Bill Somer on this, and we anticipated, we believe we have to issue generally general obligation revenue bonds and estimate about $1.2 million. This would be for a 20-year term. Looking at all the rates, we looked at every item, what we can amortize beyond the 10-year life of what the current cell for 3A and 3B. We're looking at a tipping fee, front rate increase from 16 bucks per cubic yard to 24 bucks per cubic yard, and this may become effective July 2018. So, at this time, I'm requesting the city council award a construction services contractor, Riley Brothers, in the amount of $1,011,172.49.
Is there any questions from the council? Rod?
I have a question, and I'd like to offer it.
You'll offer the...
Yeah, I will offer it. I just have a question.
I'll second it, your honor.
Okay, Rod, go ahead.
That, in terms of, and as is also for our wizard, Mr. Somer, you're about the timeline, payback, and the way you've set the rates, do you want to address that for us? Because I'm sure you've thought about it.
Yep, we did, and we had a lot of discussion about that, actually. If you recall, probably well over a year ago, we looked at what would happen if we tried to recover all costs within the 10-year permit. And that's very aggressive. The rates would even be higher. And like Brian talked about, we separated out the, like, the leachate collection system, so any of that runoff in the cell, all that infrastructure that you're going to collect, that is going to have a life longer than the 10-year of this permit, as well as, of course, the roads and, like, that alternate, too, right? That guardrail system, all that. We put all that in the longer-term bucket so that we could segregate what are just the costs for the five-year cell that we're putting. So, we're depreciating that over the five years. The others we're depreciating over 40 years, actually. So, looking at it for really a long, long term. And that's why then we arrived at a 20-year bond, rather than, you probably recall, we even looked at in the past maybe a 10-year bond, so everything would be sewn up in that permit, but it really becomes, the rate gets so high. I mean, this is a 50% rate hike on this to make all this happen, but if we're going to stay in the business, that's the way the analysis looks. So, we did look at all those terms and laid it out. So, it's a choice. Do you want to stay in that business? And the rates are going to go up. You know, we're already higher than Ottertail County right now, but of course, we're the ones paving the trail on this. Would it be fair to say our other jurisdictions will come across these when their landfills are up, too? So, we're, again, we're leading the charge.
And one more, if I could ask, your honor.
Yeah, of course.
The resident, non-resident, you know, percentage that we've set, is that in effect in play here?
Yeah, that would still be in effect. That's just our standard policy, that non-residents would pay 1.5 times the rate. So, right now, yeah, the non-resident pays the 24, but you'd go, and then it would be 1.5 times the 24 going forward. So, I think we were thinking, like, if you have a pickup load, a pickup box load of demo for, let's say, a resident going out on a Saturday, were we thinking that's like a yard and a half? So, you know, you're not going to go up a lot, you know, maybe what, $12, then? You're going to go from 20, from $16, I suppose, to... Thoughts are escaping me, but I think it's about a $12 increase for that yard and a half, what you would see. But a lot of what goes into that cell, then, is, you know, a contract, let's say, a big remodeling project or something's getting tore down. So, naturally, then, those costs are going to get put into the bid of that project wherever that may be as well as...
And one other follow-up, your honor, if I could. Is there a value in having a rate, and maybe you have this already, like, for a contractor or someone that you lock in for, like, a longer period of time, you know, in terms of paying that off and even securing that business? Is there a value in that for a regular user to the cell? So, they're not going somewhere else, you know? To make it easier for them to use it?
We haven't thought about that. You know, where's the next closest place would somebody go? Would it be over to the Henning? Is that the closest? So, you'd have the trucking costs there. And then, of course, again, the county will probably come across these same things when their permit's up, and I don't know the date of that. Brian, you maybe know that, but...
About eight years, because they...
Okay.
Prior to us starting, they were a year in advance of getting their permit, at my knowledge.
Do we have any precedent for this, with other rates, where we have rates for industrial contract or anything else, or...
Only in the past, we might have had something done differently for the dairy when Madame was in there, but I don't think it was a special rate for them. It might have actually been higher because of treatment loads. I'm going back in the memory banks a little bit, but as far as, certainly not a discount rate to lock somebody in. We haven't done that before.
Any other questions for Bill or Brian? If not, we have a resolution on the floor. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Brian.
Just one little side note with that. Certainly, as we get into this project and we put the financing package more together, I mean, we'll come back to you if we see any changes in that. I mean, certainly, if we can have the rate a little bit lower, we're going to bring that back to you and try to figure that out, but tried to give you the realistic scenario tonight, so...
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Bill.
Along those similar lines, Public Works Director Guy Taylor's going to give us an update on landfill operations.
Along with that action, Brian mentioned that we're going to need to probably restrict some loads coming into the landfill. So, I'm looking for a resolution to suspend the allowance of non-resident customers from bringing in any construction demolition debris, starting January 1. That's just to extend the life of that demo cell for the city residents. It will mean likely a drop in revenue for the landfill. In the memo, I stated there is about a little over $10,000 generated in revenue the first half of 2017 from non-residents. So, there'll be a drop in revenue, but we will hopefully see that cell life extended for resident use.
So, what if there's a... Contractor that's just outside the city limits and is working on a property inside, like, you know, on someone's house, how does that work?
If the property is within the city residents, then no problem.
Then they're fine.
Yep.
So, it's just not bringing building waste from Henning to Fergus Falls.
Correct.
That's a bad example, but you know what I mean.
I'll make that...
Resolution?
Yep.
Suspend that? Thank you, Anthony. Second, Tom? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you, Guy. Under, there are no petitions or communications under the open forum. Lois Josephson has made a request to address the council.
Thank you very much, Lois Josephson, 506 Union Avenue South. This message has essentially three parts. The city is holding many lemons. The pieces are in place to make lemonade, and we have the opportunity to do so. Lemons. By choice, Target, a business marker of community vitality and a magnet for that continuing vitality, is choosing to leave our community. We will soon have at least four freestanding vacant buildings of note and innumerable units in the mall that are vacant on the primary business entrance to our community. There are businesses in the community who are underwhelmed with customers. There have been requests for community development statistics and information for sharing with potential new property tenants by building owners of vacant property or likewise support of other nature in planning building reuse, and those responses have not been forthcoming after months of waiting and multiple contacts to the city. Some credentialed interested parties pursuing development opportunities have experienced the same non-response on city contact. Surprising negative anecdotal comments are heard from people in the region to the metro area about the challenge of doing business with the city of Fergus Falls. Opportunities for city engagement with non-city arranged economic growth fostering activities garner little to no attention. There are multiple examples of dual agendas in the community, not in any way a bad thing on its face, but when one is on the surface and one is under the surface, it's like a virus. When this circumstance is in play in Fergus Falls, not uncommonly, there is a difference in where the economic benefit falls, whether it's narrowly or more broadly to the community in general in the fleshing out of some of these dual agendas. It is grim when citizens want to share opportunities with the city, and there is not a safe, receptive, and supportive environment in which to share them. When discussing economic development options for the community with a respected financial and community leader, the night before the inaugural Midwest CEO Forum and Entrepreneur Summit held in Fergus Falls on November 7th that drew people from all across the state, with the exception of the southeastern part of the state, this financial leader and community leader made a statement that is flat-out accurate. To grow an economy, you must bring in money from outside the community. We are poised to make an irreparable city future impacting decision in the decisions that are going to be taking place about the Kirkbride. That complex, if developed with this special intent of bringing in people from outside the community and their fiscal resources, can literally bring thousands of people year after year to this community. The pieces are in play to move that kind of a development forward. We need a safe, receptive, and supportive environment to share all of those pieces, and then to work together to lean in to filling the gaps and orchestrating the pieces to fit together. The Fergus Falls people and people outside this community are poised to share that information. If we can pull that off, friends, we will have made lemonade for this city and its citizens for a long time. If we don't do that, we don't ever get a chance to make that lemonade. It will take some coordination and some combined efforts to do so. Uniquely, the desire to get to bare land with just the tower on that property has been around for a long time, well before the state turned it over to the city. Architectural drawings were present for having it torn down to the tower and having the courthouse removed from downtown and located behind it. That didn't take place. Likewise, there was quite a train moving down the road to take it down, with the exception of just bare portions of it, the tower, and perchance the front facade walls, to build the high school on those grounds. I was part of a very large committee that looked at it and, in that process, presented a schematic of what might happen with the Kennedy property. End result is, that process didn't go forward. Others took the Kennedy plans forward, and they're very different than what I had tossed out. But the key piece was that the opportunity was there at the very end to be able to show something that could happen. Please provide this kind of an opportunity to our citizens now at this point. We have a crisis on our hands, and our citizens are just alive with ideas that can carry this city forward. And it's happened because of Target. We have all sorts of good things happening in this community in the last months of Daily Journal. We'll show that. We have a riverfront effort that is coordinated and going forward. We have a downtown effort that's coordinated and going forward. Let's put the Kirkbride information into that picture and use this final window that we have to let the population know what the options are with the pieces in play that are there. That safe, receptive, supportive environment hasn't ever been here, and the city can help put it here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lois. And I have a copy of Lois's comments. If anyone would like, I could get copies to anyone, assuming that's...
What is worth, they looked fairly different, so I'll give you a clean one.
Thanks, Lois. On the consent agenda this evening, there's a copy in your packet, and I believe we'll have a copy on the board. If anyone has, would like to pull any of those items off and speak about them individually? If not, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under ordinances and resolutions, tonight we'll have a second reading of ordinance 65, the rezoning of Woodland Heights. It's been talked about at multiple council meetings. Roll call, please. Oh, yeah? Did you want to...
I just want to make one comment, your honor, members of the council. I put a map on your guys' desks earlier today, and I just note there's two areas, one of them being Gunnerson Property here on the west side of Offerman Lake, and the other one being the Drews Property. Those will remain zone agriculture, and that's by the request of the property owner. The remainder of the properties in the rezoning will be going from R8 to R1, which is single...
This is the horse pasture.
R1.
Yep.
Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a loan request for United Properties, the Wash and Go.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members. Before you this evening is consideration of a loan request that has been received by the city from United Properties LLP to participate in the permanent financing for the new automatic car wash that is under construction at 1225 North Union Avenue at the former Stop and Go. The city has reviewed the bank's loan write-up information, which anticipates a $250,000 loan from the city with a 20-year amortization schedule, 5% interest rate, and a 10-year balloon payment to be funded through the intermediary relending program, or IRP funding, that is a loan pool originally capitalized in the 1990s with USDA dollars for the purpose of establishing a local revolving loan fund. There's been minimal activity with this loan pool in recent years, and there is just one outstanding loan having a balance of $13,000 currently out of that pool. So, there is still many numerous hundreds of thousands of dollars that we want to try to get out into the community, and this loan is a good fit for that. Just as a reminder, this would be in addition to the three-year, $40,000 working capital loan that was considered and approved in October. This additional loan request is a result from an appraisal shortfall, so really looked at as a traditional gap loan. That is a typical role for municipal loan funds in this regard. The amount of the Small Business Administration loan and the bank loans are limited based on the percentage of the actual appraisal that took place recently. So, that's what's created this gap in the permanent financing for this project. We've reviewed the loan request, and as well, we've discussed it with our USDA representative, who is also supportive and would like to see these funds used in the community. We would be in a third position in the real estate, so, as I mentioned, bank financing with Bell Bank locally, Small Business Administration, and then the city's loan would be in third position, and we would be receiving a 1.5% origination fee to account for the service or the application costs and recording fees, personal guarantee from the borrowers, as well as key person life insurance on the owners as well. This is considered a market rate loan, as I mentioned, a 5% loan, so there is not a requirement for a business subsidy agreement, and a public hearing isn't necessary either. It's just a traditional loan without any additional requirements on that. We would be receiving interest into this loan fund on that, and the project is filling a vacant building that we're happy to see a new building going up in there. Hopefully, the build, the business will open shortly, weather permitting on the construction, and the borrower is here this evening if there are any questions for him as well. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this request.
Any members of the council have any questions for Amy or for the borrower?
So, how about just the appraisal? I mean, for it to be a shortfall.
The appraisal came in at about 1.225. And then there's percentage limits of lending from SBA, and then related, the bank comes up as a percentage of the SBA. So, I don't have the full spread of that calculation in front of me.
Rod, did you have a question?
Yeah, it was just a clarification on what could be called collateral, but you had the insurance policy and you had something else...
Real estate. We'll be using real estate and then key person life insurance. So, if one of the key owners in the business, so Lonnie and Danielle... Ballwig, thank you. Should one of them pass away, the balance of the loan is paid through life insurance, considered, you know, key to the operations of the business.
Lonnie, there was a question at one point about the water usage. Is that being addressed, to your knowledge, or where are we at on that?
I believe you referred to the hookup fees?
Yeah.
For the water?
Corrected. I know that someone's looking into it at this time, but we have not been given an answer.
Thank you.
Your honor, I...
Go ahead.
I'll just speak to that. The way our ordinance is written, the charge, we verified on more than an occasion, the charge is correct under the way the ordinance is written. I will say the ordinance is outdated, so we probably, as a council, you guys will probably want to update that and make it more user-friendly, but the way the ordinance is written currently, the water access charge was calculated based off of that, with credit given for the one stall car wash that was existing on the property, which already had paid the water access charge, and we've determined that the dollar amount that has been given to the developer is the correct dollar amount, based on the ordinances, the way they're written today, and that's the only thing that staff can go by, so...
Sounds like we should take a look at that ordinance at some point.
Yeah.
Yes, Anthony.
I actually did meet with Brian, and we went over the numbers, and I think what we're lacking is that there's no, there's no update to take into account, obviously, the efficiency of a car wash today versus kind of perhaps when it was written.
Which was the '70s. Yep.
Yeah, and Brian was going to pull some numbers together so that we could look at that.
Sure.
So, your honor, can we attach something so there's either retroactive or something to say, "We're going to look at this," and not, and not just get stuck with a bad ordinance decision costing him more than it should? decision costing him more than it should? Is there a way to write that, Rolfe, if we pass it or just direct us to or what? Because if we set it, or can we set it for a period of time so that we review it so that we can look at it again, so he doesn't, he's not indefinitely stuck with this?
I think we can take a look at that. I think what's, I mean, that's collateral, that's a different issue, I think, than what you're being presented with right now.
I know, but it's tied together because we're approving something, right?
But I don't think you should tie it to a resolution, the resolution...
No, I'm asking you to help us just navigate it fairly.
I get it, but I think what you're asking is, is that staff to take a look at the ordinance to see what updates need to be made. Whether we can apply that retroactively to, in this situation, we'll look into that. But typically, you can't do retroactive laws, but we can look into that in this situation.
All right, thank you.
But we do have the right to waive anything at any time.
Sure.
There's probably some options. Well, staff, bring it back and we can discuss what the options are.
Your Honor, just so the developers cleared, the staff wouldn't have the ability to waive that ordinance. It would have to be from the council. So, we're doing what we can, but we're limited by the ordinance, so.
Certainly, yep, certainly. That's on the council. Is there, we should probably have a resolution on the floor.
I'll offer the resolution.
Tom, thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution at hand?
Should be seconded.
Yeah, Tom's seconded.
Definitely.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, okay, so Amy, you're going to introduce Jeff Miller from HKGI? And you're going to walk us through the downtown riverfront master plan. Don't you hate it when that happens?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Moving on, if you recall back in May of 2016, the City of Fergus Falls issued a request for qualifications to firms seeking a consultant or consultant group to complete a downtown and riverfront master plan. Following a multi-stage selection process, a team led by Hoyington Kogler Group Inc., or HKGI, was selected and that team included Bolton and Mank, providing engineering services, and Miller Dunwitty with historic preservation. Tonight, we will be providing an overview of what the project has done to date, including community outreach and then an overview of the document itself. It was presented to the Planning Commission last Monday and was recommended for approval with a six-to-one vote. So, the study area itself was broken down into three areas, West River Reach, Downtown Reach, and East River Reach, as they each had kind of their unique characteristics. So, we broke them down into that area, which was really helpful throughout the process, I felt, as we talked about different areas. And we kicked off in fall of 2016 with a start of a number of community engagement points. So, there was ongoing a project management team that was made up of city staff that met throughout the last fourteen or so months. A community advisory committee met nine times and with us tonight is Chris McCon and Joyce Lacy, I thought Joyce come in, from the Community Advisory Committee. And like I mentioned, they met nine times over the course of the work. There were four open houses, a design charrette in February of this year, a joint planning commission city council meeting in May. Monthly updates were provided to the city council throughout the process. Going back to January, there were stakeholder listening sessions with a variety of groups. A river recreation roundtable was convened twice around accessing the river in different ways. We conducted developer interviews where we vetted some of the concepts that were generated out of the previous engagement to ensure that there was alignment with what the private development world would see as opportunities. An online survey was conducted. There was a workshop specifically around public art with Horcaast Public Art supporting that workshop to think more specifically about what public art could look like in our community. And then throughout the process, there were presentations to various community groups. So, with that, we had, you know, a purpose in mind and it was looking at establishing a community-based vision for the future of the downtown and its riverfront. That was, you know, the why we were doing this, to try to identify those improvements and connections to the community and how we could envision improved and expanded downtown area, both public spaces and systems within the study area, looking at particular redevelopment concepts for a number of the opportunity sites that were identified and really act as a guide for future investment efforts by the public sector, private sector, nonprofits, and to set priorities on how we move forward with this plan. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Miller from HKGI, who has been the project manager throughout the process.
Thank you, Amy.
Mayor, council members, good evening. I think I've met all of you in the past, so familiar faces. Hopefully, you had a chance to at least skim through the plan that you're going to hopefully approve tonight. But I'll give you a brief overview of the key components of it, starting with how to use the master plan. So, HKGI has done plans like this for other communities and when they're done really well, hopefully, there's something that are used a lot in both the pictures, because the pictures are easy to get into, and the words are used over time and you keep going back to it to carry out the projects that are identified in the plan. So, what, how to use the master plan, it has a vision for downtown and the riverfront in words, but also in a lot of pictures in there, whether it's the opportunity sites or the public systems and spaces. It's really meant to show how you want to improve the public spaces and systems, including roadways, streetscapes, and gateways, parking, trails and bikeways, parks and plazas, public art, and river access. Also for improving opportunity sites, just to keep it simple, I realize there's seven public spaces and systems and there's seven opportunity sites, so maybe that will help you remember how many things you're dealing with over the next few years. And the last thing is implementing the ideas. The plan should help you decide what actions and projects to undertake to achieve what's in the plan and for prioritizing those. The master plan vision that we've come up with for the plan is Fergus Falls seeks to transform our downtown and riverfront into a desirable and vibrant gathering place that integrates and celebrates the city's unique river, downtown, outdoor recreation activities, heritage, and civic pride. And in the document, there's bullet points that go with that. There's also some guiding principles in there that will be useful over time. So, I'm going to quickly go over the opportunity sites. So, as I said, there's seven opportunity sites that were identified as primary sites versus another handful of secondary ones. And this map shows the primary versus secondary and it shows them by the three areas of the study area, which Amy covered, is the downtown reach, the west river reach, and the east river reach. The seven sites are the riverfront parking lot east and then the west, straight across from us, straight across the river, the old mill site, the old dairy site, east gateway, north gateway, and then the civic mall, which is to this side of us, including Washington One of the big ideas was the riverfront across, again, in the public parking lots across the river. And through a major part of the project, we looked at this as one thing, but as we got towards the finish line, we realized it was better to think of it as two different sites. So, the riverfront parking lot east, this is the concept that's in the plan. And what it's showing is a river balcony that crosses from Union Avenue over to the federal building, so a two-block river balcony, riverfront park, riverfront amphitheater down by the river, plaza and interactive fountain, farmer's market, the trail along the river, a shared alley behind the existing buildings on Lincoln Avenue for continuing to be used for vehicles, but also for pedestrians, and then saving some parking on that site. The riverfront parking lot west, so between Union and Court, both these sites are owned by the city, as you know, so it's up to the city to decide what to do with both of these. This one is showing a view of private development on this site at some point, but again, the city would be involved with that, obviously would have to sell it, could work with the developer to get what they're looking for. What the concept shows is a river balcony, again, since it's going to be a two-block-long river balcony, a shared alley, again, mixed-use buildings, could be one building, could be two buildings right on the riverfront. Potential for those buildings to have ground-level restaurants or retail or at least something that where people can go into those spaces and could maybe have outdoor dining, since that's a precious thing in a lot of communities and something that Fergus Falls doesn't have today. And then parking, this site could have surface parking, but also underground parking, so it could have a lot of parking on the site with redevelopment. The old mill site, which is owned by a developer, and we did talk to the developer a couple of times during the project. We did not do a concept for this site, which you'll see in the plan, since it has a developer and they're working on concepts. But what the plan knows about this site is that it's a vacant industrial property, much like the dairy property along the river. There's a, the city has a survey that says it's probably eligible for historic designation, would offer river views, access and access. Potential redevelopment could be the reuse of the mill building, new buildings for multi-unit residential, possibly a hotel, and we know the developers looked at multi-level parking possibly. And then a key part of this is that this site is next to Union, Stanton, and Vine Street, Vine Street being an unimproved street that could go all the way to the river. So, it offers a lot of potential for the city to be involved with improving those streets as part of the redevelopment. The old dairy site and the lumber site on the north side of the rail line. With that, what the plan says about that one is the key things are the Glacial Edge Trail for biking and walking along the river, a riverfront parkway along the river, parking green space along the entire riverfront with public views and access to the river. Rail crossings, it would involve, or the concept involves relocating the existing rail crossing from Views to Broadway, adding, or as engineers would say, don't say add, relocating a crossing somewhere else to St. Andrews, which will not be easy, as you know better than anybody. Extension of Stanton Avenue out to St. Andrews and then the potential for future housing development with river views and access. And that's, that's what that would look like. The primary site in the plan is south of the rail line, north of the rail line where the lumber site is, is currently being used, so it doesn't, we're not calling that a primary site at this point. The east gateway site is another potential redevelopment site at some point. And what the plan says about that is new buildings fronting on Lincoln Avenue with street-level commercial, new civic and/or residential buildings along the river, parking located away from the riverfront and away from Lincoln Avenue, having buildings along those amenities, improved public riverfront and then creating views to the river and Veterans Park. The north gateway site, north of Kevore to south of Union. The concept shows new mixed-use buildings fronting onto Kevore and having parking behind the buildings, which is the opposite of what's there today, creating a pedestrian street connection from downtown to Lake Alice. Public plaza at Kevore and Court would be a potential concept and then public parking ramps on the south side of Kevore. So, as you've probably heard, parking is a big discussion with the plan and the two surface parking lots on the south side of Kevore offer potential to be either one or two public parking ramps that could accommodate any parking that shifts from the, directly off the riverfront. And then last, the civic mall, Washington Avenue concept, the civic mall being a green open space mall with pedestrian features between the county courthouse and city hall. Views of, a lot of the city landmarks can be obtained from that site, so if you stand over there and look north, you can see a lot of city landmarks. Relocating overhead utility lines underground, public art opportunities. Washington Avenue, the opportunities are to narrow the actual driving portion of the road to add boulevards between the sidewalks and the curb, and then you could have street trees as well. Enhanced pedestrian crossings, streetlights that are pedestrian-oriented rather than the really tall, bright ones today, and then wayfinding. So, that's, that's the concepts that are in the plan for the opportunity sites and those are, you know, they will take a while to happen and we'll talk about priorities at the end of this presentation. So, the public spaces and systems, as I said, there's seven of those as well, so roadways, streetscapes, gateways, parking, trails and bikeways, parks, plazas, and public art, river access, and then the most popular, land use zoning and historic resources. So, for roadways, there's a, there's a drawing in there showing where those improvements could happen over time. They involve new and reconstructed roadways, intersection enhancements primarily along Union and then along Lincoln, and then mid-block pedestrian crossings to accommodate the river balcony, so that'd be across Court and across Union Avenue. Mid-block crossings to, at the alleys across Court, Cascade Mill, and Union, also for the River Walk and then also for the civic mall across Washington and Junius. There's streetscapes and gateway recommendations in there, focusing on Lincoln Avenue, as you know, that was upgraded some time ago and is a great street, but it's been a long time since it was invested in significantly, so we'd be updating it. Union Avenue, Stanton Avenue, and Washington Avenue being redesigned over time to be more pedestrian, bike-friendly, as well as vehicle-friendly. And then there's ideas for the other downtown streets as well. And then concepts for gateways into downtown, into the riverfront, and wayfinding. Parking recommendations, one of them's a downtown parking study and we'll talk about that in a bit. Parking structures potentially, one could be on the west riverfront block underground and then the ramps potentially on Kevore. Parking management, so the city, since the city owns so much of the public, or the parking downtown in those off-street lots and the on-street parking spaces, really having a plan to help people understand where parking is, how much there is, and dealing with perceptions of there not being enough in places where there may be enough. So, things like dealing with customer parking versus employee parking, short-term parking, if there is short-term parking, enforcing it, or if it's not being enforced, maybe not having it, shared parking ideas. And again, wayfinding so that people, when they come into downtown and they come on Lincoln Avenue, they know how to get to the parking that's just behind the buildings and maybe a lot of times, people just don't know it's there. Trail and bikeway recommendations, a key one is the Glacial Edge Trail, which you know is a regional trail and has recently been approved as a regional trail by the state, state of Minnesota, so it's eligible for regional funding, which is a great, great thing. Downtown trail loops and bridges over the river and then adding bikeways. Parks, plazas, and public art, we've identified those on the map that you see up there, but basically getting parks and open space along the river, ideas for where public art could go and just making the riverfront and downtown more pedestrian-friendly. River access recommendations, including river views, overlooks, the river balcony, of course, trail bridges over the river, boat access points, mostly non-motorized, but probably an additional motorized one on the west river reach, shore fishing, and then improving the river's ecology. And then last, land use zoning and historic resources. So, the recommendations there are, the city's RFP for this project was that this was the first phase of developing a citywide comprehensive plan, which the city does not have today. So, recommendation is to continue that effort to have a citywide comprehensive plan, establish a new mixed-use zoning district for downtown. You can see on the map suggested areas where that could be applied. Establish a new mixed-use zoning district for downtown. You can see on the map suggested areas where that could be applied, which would be basically the area north of Kevore and then in the mill site area. Developing design standards for downtown properties, and that could be in the city's ordinances or as guidelines, which are more optional. And then pursuing designation of potentially eligible historic properties. So finally, the implementation approach that's in here, so the section five of the plan lays out initiatives that have already started, and there's a number of those, which is great, so this project, in a way, is already, is rolling. And that includes Ray Park, includes the public art workshop that just happened, the Glacial Edge Trail. There's a, the big list or the overview of potential actions in there, which have order of magnitude costs and phasing. Priority projects are identified, and jumpstart projects are identified, and then potential partnerships and funders. So really quickly, the priority projects that we're recommending in the plan are, and these aren't necessarily in order, although we have heard some people like the order of the first one. So the downtown parking system is a priority, and a downtown parking study is identified as something that should happen right away. The Glacial Edge Trail, getting the funding for that so that that can move ahead, because that's not all city money. That would be a lot of regional money. Downtown circulation is another way of saying investing in the roads that are most important, like Union Avenue and Washington Avenue especially, and Lincoln Avenue, and Stanton Avenue. Public art and wayfinding signage, investing in downtown events and business resources. And then the priority, or opportunity sites are the riverfront parking lot east. So as I said, we split the east and west sites out, and we feel like, well, the plan is that the east site is most important of all the sites. The old mill site's really important, short-term, and then the dairy site. So next steps, the final master plan document, the hope is to have that finalized and done by the end of this year yet. And then establishing an implementation committee in January, although I won't commit to that since that will be somebody else's responsibility. But appointing a working group to begin coordinating partnerships, projects, funding, and community outreach. There are 12 jumpstart projects in there that, in our eyes, could start near-term, but not long-term. That's what I have for you, so unless you have questions or comments for us.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions, comments from council?
I just have a comment. I'd just like to give a big nod to your guys' efforts in putting this all together and presenting it to us tonight. It's well laid out and good job.
I would echo that to Jeff and your crew at HKGI, Amy and your staff, Chris, Joyce, everyone at the Community Advisory Committee, everyone who showed up at the, you know, hundreds of people, hundreds of people that showed up at the different opportunities to comment. There's a lot of energy and a lot of excitement around this. I hope we can keep the momentum going. Done a lot of planning, and now I'm excited for the implementation of this plan, so I would echo those.
That I would offer the resolution approving the master plan.
Is there a second?
A second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Any other questions, comments for Amy or Jeff or anyone? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Exciting times ahead. Under presentation of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of $1,972,235.97, and I would entertain a resolution to pay those bills. If there's any questions, we'll direct those to finance.
Call out for your.
Thank you, Scott.
Have a second?
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. There are no reports under Board or Committee or Departments, or from, or reports from staff or administrative officers. I don't know of any old or unfinished business, and I don't know of any new business. So with that, the only announcements I would make is relating to Christmas next week, garbage and recycling pickup is pushed back Mondays, Tuesdays, Tuesdays is Wednesday, Wednesdays is Thursday? Good. Mondays is Tuesday.
Could I just put a plug in for the efforts of staff, Len and others, and the pickup for the recycling? We did our garbage sort, and we found that we reduced now down to below 12%.
From 25, right?
From 25. So we've cut another, well, we cut the amount of recyclables in the garbage in half, so we've cut it from 25 to below 12, which is amazing. And they were all very pleased out at the recycling center. And just a reminder that we're still looking for support, encouragement, right, your legislators, et cetera, about that grant to retrofit our county recycling to be, to take the stuff here for a clean recycling, single sort. And so please support that, encourage that to happen. It's very important for our region. And I just want to, I'm just, I think we should be really excited about what's happening in Fergus with recycling. It's very, very good, so.
Absolutely. Isn't that the same sweater you were wearing?
Yeah, smells like kitty litter.
And on that note, I would say as we come into the holidays, there is an additional extra amount of packaging that will go on. So make sure you recycle it and get it in the right bin.
And with that being said, Your Honor, members, gift wrapping paper is not recyclable, so put that in your garbage cans. I don't, do you have anything else to add?
Gift bags are not recyclable.
Gift bags are not recyclable?
But they are regiftable.
Cardboard boxes and gift boxes are.
Yes, okay. And on that note, I guess I would just say from everyone here at City Hall to everyone in the community, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and be safe, and everyone have a happy holiday season. It's been a good one so far. With that, we will adjourn to a closed session. I, it's likely that we will reconvene after the closed session, so not 100%, but as chances are, we will reconvene. But with that, we will adjourn to a closed meeting for real estate negotiations pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 113D.05. And with that, we will adjourn.